So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 24th, 2022 Meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Kent if he would give us an invocation, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. We rise for prayer. Almighty God, you have given us this good land, this county of Calver, as our heritage, and we grant that we might remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Lord, I ask you to bless this land with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Grant that we who come to this place from many different places may become united as a people and support us in defending our liberties. Give those to whom you have entrusted the authority of government, this Board of County Commissioners, the spirit of wisdom, that through them there may be justice and peace in our land as they make difficult decisions about our lives. When times are prosperous, may our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times, do not let our trust in you fail. We ask all this in Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Pastor Kent, I want to thank you. Pastor Kent is from the First Lutheran Church in Huntington. I want to thank you for coming here today, and also, we were together Sunday at an Eagle Ceremony, so.
It was a great opportunity to honor some young men in our community, and thank you guys for being there and supporting us. It was a great time, man, by all.
Well, we tried not to miss those because that is quite an achievement for a young man in today's world, and stats show that they turn out to be great citizens, so.
And we remember that when, you know, we were young, like them, people like, you know, like you, were honoring you in the praises of Solomon, so thank you for being a good mentor to those young guys.
Absolutely.
Maybe we'll see some of them sitting on those desks someday.
Maybe so.
Absolutely.
Maybe so. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have a great day. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, or are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Have motion in a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, just want to remind everybody Memorial Day is coming up next Monday, and there will be a service here at the courthouse at 10:00, I believe.
Uh, 1:00.
1:00. That's why I'm looking around.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I'm looking for guidance. I wasn't getting any.
Not appear.
So, we'll be there. I want to make sure, remind everybody that on Memorial Day that they take a moment or two and reflect back on the sacrifice that many individuals have given in our country to make sure that we all live free today. And there was some discussion last week in the papers about the Police Accountability Board. We just want to let everybody know that the committee is reviewing those applications, and that sometime in the near future will be presenting to us recommendations. And this afternoon, at 2:00, we'll be at North Beach to have a groundbreaking ceremony for the new Twin Beaches Library. Due to the weather, I believe they moved the ceremony to the town, North Beach Town Hall, so anybody out there that's listening and planning to attend, I believe as of now we're going to be at the North Beach Town Hall at 2:00. And then we'll go outside and take a picture in the rain, playing in the dirt, maybe. And they also, which is not in my notes, they also at 3:30 this afternoon are going to rededicate the Memorial Garden in North Beach in honor of Mayor Mark Frazier. So, we have two great events in North Beach this afternoon. So, so the next item I have on the agenda is to convene as the Calver County Board of Health.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene a meeting of the Calver County Board of Health.
Second.
Second. I have motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Dr. Polsky, good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be back. We're going to cover a bit of ground today. My break slides that separate the different topics are from my recent trip to four national parks in New Mexico and Texas.
Oh, yeah, just rub it in.
It was, it was nice to get away for a little while, but it is lovely to be back in Calver County. So, it's going to be nothing but critters with the one exception of one little bit of scenery up there. The slides, people at home may not realize that I need to submit those a little over a week ahead of time, and things do change over time, so I just briefly wanted to talk about two topics that have been in the news over the past week. One is what's situation with baby formula, and then the other will be a brief discussion about monkeypox. So, for baby formula, I do want to reassure parents that although we have had some families in Calver County that initially have had some difficulty finding formula specific for the needs of their infants, that no babies have gone without formula, that between the resources we have with our local pediatricians and family practitioners, resources through our local WIC office, and then our health department working in concert with both of the private sector and with WIC, and also with community food organizations like CareNet, that no families have gone without the formula that they need. So, if any family out there is having trouble finding a formula that is best for their baby, my first suggestion is if you are WIC-eligible, call our local WIC office. For other families, to call their pediatrician, and if for any reason there's still difficulty, our health department staff who coordinates with both will assist and make sure that, again, no baby goes without the formula is critical. Just three quick precautions. So, one, there's no need to hoard. We don't want to exacerbate, you know, the limited supplies that are out there. Secondly, on the internet, there have been home recipes for formula. It's not a good idea. Formula is a very specific recipe that involves micronutrients that are not going to be available to average families, and the amounts of ingredients, protein versus fat versus carbohydrates, is very, very specific, and so people should not try to recreate on their own. Also, newborns are very, very susceptible to foodborne infections, and even for people who are being very careful, sometimes contaminants, bacteria get in. We don't want to see babies getting sick. The other is that apparently some parents, not necessarily in Calver, but other places, have tried to dilute the formula to make it last longer. It's dangerous in two ways. One, it's not adequate nutrition for your baby when you dilute, and secondly, because babies' systems are very sensitive, you start to dilute out, and the babies actually become susceptible to seizures. And so, every pediatrician has said 100% that formulas should be used and reconstituted by the instructions on there. Again, for any family that's having trouble locating, please contact us, please contact WIC, or contact your baby's provider. Don't try to go by internet advice. And then the other topic in the news this week has been monkeypox.
So, just a moment. Back to baby formula. This is certainly an instance where government dropped the ball because you can't go in and shut down a facility that supplies 40% of anything and think there's not going to be any issues in supply. So, somebody, when they closed that plant, should have worked on a Plan B to make sure that there was adequate supply.
And I think this has been an awakening at the federal level as far as consequences, and so certainly there, I know there are changes coming about, including at the moment importation of a certain amount of formula from overseas, which was also something that had been essentially forbidden previously.
Especially in light of, they say it's going to take eight weeks to get that plant back up in full operation, so, you know, somebody should have had some foresight, as I said. When you take that much supply out of the market, it's going to take that long to get it back up and running.
And in the meantime, again, I just, I don't want parents locally to panic. We have not had babies ending up in the emergency room because of, you know, malnutrition or any other reasons, but we do realize that for some families, and this is particularly babies who need special types of formula because of food sensitivities or because of other health reasons, that we've been able to find the appropriate resources for every family who's needed help. And then turning to monkeypox, so it seems like every few months we're dealing with another disease. Monkeypox is not a new virus. We've known about it since the 50s. It's almost certainly been around for a long, long time, but that's when it was first isolated and identified. It's indigenous to certain parts of Africa. There have been occasions over the last half-century plus where cases have been diagnosed outside of Africa. What is different about this particular instance is that instead of, instead of seeing an isolated case in Europe or in the U.S., we're actually seeing transmission outside of Africa. So, that is, that's why there's some degree of concern. I will say the chances of the monkeypox infections turning into something anywhere near the scale of COVID is almost zero. Transmission is much different. Unlike COVID, where you, about half the people who can transmit never develop any symptoms, even those who do develop symptoms can transmit one or two days before they start to feel bad. With monkeypox, no one is contagious until they actually develop symptoms, and everyone who gets monkeypox gets a very characteristic rash, which you can look on the internet and find the less than lovely pictures. So, this is a very small number of cases at this point. My expectation is that people who have developed the infections, as more doctors, emergency rooms become aware, they'll be quicker at isolating people, and we'll eventually see a stop in transmission in this country. Over this past weekend, I did send out a little cheat sheet, so to speak, for all of our local physicians, urgent care, and emergency rooms as far as what they should be looking for. It's, again, not likely that we'll see cases in Calver, but it's a possibility, and we've learned from COVID, we don't, never want to turn our backs on a new disease. We don't want anyone getting unnecessarily sick. And testing has to go through the state lab, which means that if there is a suspected case in the county, that all the local doctors, nurse practitioners, and PAs know to contact us. We have a 24/7 number for them to be able to get the test kit, and we will arrange for the specimen to be sent immediately up to the state lab to expedite diagnosis.
Are there vaccines?
So, there are no specific vaccines for monkeypox. Smallpox vaccines very likely diminish people's susceptibility to monkeypox. It's been.
That's standard, right?
It's been about 50 years since anyone in this country's been vaccinated for smallpox. So.
Okay. I was wondering, like, in the childhood thing these days, is that still, but, you know?
Yeah, so, no, and, and that's part of the thought as to why we're seeing these increased cases now is because if you go back a few decades ago, still the majority of the population had been immunized against smallpox, but, again, everybody under 50, probably under 55 in this country, was never vaccinated because smallpox was eradicated from the U.S. back in the late 60s, early 70s. And there are some medications that, again, not specifically approved for monkeypox, but we know work against viruses in that general family, so that if someone should become ill, at least there's a potential to use them. Fatality rates in Africa, there's two strain, two primary strains of monkeypox. One has a fatality rate of 10%, and the other one has a fatality rate of about 1%. It appears that the strain that's been circulating in Europe, Canada, U.S., and Australia are the, is the milder strain. I'm not aware of any deaths at this point from the cases that have been out there.
Because it's funny how some of those, like, like chickenpox comes back later as shingles.
This is a different family of virus. I know there's pox at the end, so this is, monkeypox is related to smallpox, but it's a completely different family of virus than what causes chickenpox. Yep. So, scarring is a possibility for where the pox come out, like when people would get smallpox, they would get scarring, but not aware of any long-term, like a shingles-type thing from this.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right. Unless there's any questions, I'm going to move along because we've got some other ground to cover. Every spring, University of Wisconsin and Robert Wood Johnson Foundation comes out with their community health rankings, and I'm happy to say once again that Calver has done very well. One of only five counties in the state that ranked in the top quartile in both health outcomes and health factors, so not to get too deep in the weeds, health outcomes have to do with things like premature deaths, low birth weight for infants. They used to have infant mortality, but now they have low birth weight as a surrogate for both preterm birth and infant mortality. HIV prevalence, and then there's self-rating in terms of people's health. Health factors have to do with things like tobacco use, obesity, physical inactivity, drug and alcohol misuse, teen pregnancy, and number of physicians, primary care providers per 10,000 residents in a county, so, and, and the percentage of the population that's insured. So, there are a number of factors that have to do with the healthcare accessibility, and then susceptibility to different kinds of disease. So, as has been the case for over a decade, Montgomery County and Howard County rank 1, 2, and then Frederick, Carroll County, and Calver make up the next cohort of the next three healthiest counties in the state. So, for the most part, we're doing well relative, but certainly there are areas that we could be doing better. And so, on the chart I have up where there's an asterisk for the top four, our rates have actually declined a bit over, and I will say that because of COVID, some of these stats kind of froze back in 2019. Others have been updated more recently. So, smoking had been down as low as 14% in the county. I know that going back about a decade ago, there was this idea that vaping would somehow be the magic bullet, and nobody would smoke tobacco anymore, that everybody would switch over to vaping, was unfortunately where I've actually seen smoking rates increase since vaping came around, not decrease. Obesity rates are, and all these are up between 1 and 5% compared to five years prior. Physical inactivity and excessive drinking. What we've improved is a further decrease in teen births, low birth weight for babies, and mental health providers. We've certainly significantly improved access to mental health and substance use care over the past five years. Now, I know that Commissioner Hart in particular oftentimes talks about if people, if their baseline health is better, they're just less susceptible to everything from COVID to pretty much you name it, if, if their health should be stressed by something, and he's absolutely right. We are about to receive, the health department's about to receive a community health resource grant that will really be aimed at obesity and diabetes, along with that other related, like hypertension, that lead to a variety of problems. So, we anticipate getting funding somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000. We've laid a lot of groundwork to this point, but we've never had the resources to be able to really have a team dedicated. So, our staff that has worked on these kind of activities has always had, it's part of their time, and part of their time is on this, and part of their time's on that, but this funding will allow us to have a dedicated team. And you can see the pie chart there, which is probably impossible for most people to read. That's where health, healthcare dollars go in the U.S., and only about 2% go to public health programs. So, we spend roughly 98%. Once people get sick, then we spend about 2% in trying to prevent people from getting sick.
I've never understood that. You know, it's like everybody has a program. You know that you change the oil in the car, because if you don't, the car's going to mess up, but we don't treat our body that way.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's always goes what goes in, and I, will this give you the ability, enough boots on the ground to work with the schools and to be able to set up meetings and stuff to where, to try to get that type of verbiage going?
We're still going to be limited as to what we can do. Again, $350,000 to $400,000.
I know. That's why I asked.
This will be spread over two to three years, but this will be then building on, on other money. We're going to try to really concentrate resources that we have. So, we've been, again, during COVID, we've had an opportunity to interact with our local primary care offices and specialists, so our two endocrinologists in the county, Dr. O'Keefe and Dr. Thomas, have been very involved in helping us plan this out. Their programs, both to try to prevent people from becoming diabetic and helping them lose weight, diabetes prevention program that the hospital started programs years ago. Our health departments have expanded on that prior to COVID, where we actually make classes available in medical offices so people don't have to come to us. So, if they go see a doctor down in Solomon's or up in Dunkirk, that we have classes that we go to them. And so, diabetes prevention program, which is aimed at people who have been diagnosed as prediabetic, so they have blood sugars that are no longer in what we like to see as normal range, but they haven't crossed completely into true diabetes. We know that for a large percentage of those people, within the next several years, they will become true diabetics. So, these programs are year-long. They involve over 20 classes during that year, and they've been proven through pretty rigorous research that people who attend the classes do dramatically better, that their blood sugars start to fall back down toward normal, they actually, for many of them, they will lose weight and sustain that. So, these are, and then we have another program, Diabetes Self-Management, for people already are diabetic. So, much of this is aimed at adults, but it's also very important to us because we realize that child obese, child and adolescent obesity is a significant problem, and that's really, when you look long-term, that's where the biggest bang for your buck is.
I agree. I agree completely.
So, working with the school system, you know, into this next school year is also a priority for us. So, we have branches going out, including our behavioral health clinics, where oftentimes people with mental health and substance use problems, that we know they are at higher risk for what we call somatic health problems. And, and so, we're going to have case managers working with the population who, who uses our behavioral health clinics to make sure that we don't neglect the rest of their health. And part of this program is a case manager, which we've used very successfully in a lot of other programs, to tie people in so that, again, they're following up with their primary care, or if they don't have a primary care provider, to try to help find them one, including for low-income people, helping out with transportation and a host of other things. So, this is going to be a significant undertaking, and we think we're really at a good position right now to be able to move ahead with this program. One of the challenges we're going to have, as mentioned, primary care, is that Calver is no exception when it comes to more rural jurisdictions, have really, for, you know, going back decades, have not had enough primary care providers, or specials for that matter. So, the top line is the number of primary care providers per, and then you can see the number on the Y-axis. So, we have one primary care physician for every 2,000 residents. The Maryland average is the lower line, so closer to 1,000. So, for every four, I'll just quickly put some numbers to it. So, every 4,000 residents in Calver, we have two primary care doctors. In Anne Arundel, they have three. In Montgomery County, they have six, and in Howard County, they have eight. Now, probably have too many in Howard County, but the, the challenge here is that there are people who could move into, to establish the primary care provider, and there just may not be enough to go around. So, that, this is going to be an ongoing project, but again, this is not unique to Calver County. Actually, we are slightly better off than St. Mary's and Charles, and much better than a few of the Eastern Shore counties. But still, we know this is, you know, nothing's easy when it comes to improving people's health. I did want to mention that suicide is often something that catches people's attention. Calver is, and again, this is from the county health rankings, Calver actually has the fifth lowest suicide rate of any of the 24 counties in Maryland, so you can see the rankings for the top five right there. Certainly does not mean, you know, that we want to see a single person lose their life to suicide attempt, but I think this also underscores the programs that we've been building over the last decade, including really increasing access for school-based, so for, for adolescents, for young adults. So, we now have an ever-increasing cohort of teens and people into their 20s who had much better access to mental health and substance use counseling when they were in their adolescence than really anywhere else across the state.
It's still, like, say, wait, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that, please?
Sure.
Sir. Help me understand this slide because I, as I'm looking at it, number one, I don't have any idea what age-adjusted means, and number two, the way I was reading this, it looked like Calver has a higher number, but I thought I just heard you say something that Calver's actually doing good at a lower number. Help me understand that, please.
Right. So, the, so age-adjusted, let's just quickly take an example with heart attacks. If you had a county that had a very elderly population, and then you had another county that disproportionately had a lot of young families, if you had an equal number of heart attacks in both those counties, you know there's really something wrong in that county with a lot of younger people, because we expect that if people get older, there's going to be a larger number of heart attacks. So, what age-adjusted means is that the statisticians, epidemiologists, will then adjust to, so what they're looking at is all the 20-year-olds, 20-year-olds, all the, how do I explain this in an easy way without putting a lot of math on a board? But, so what they do is they statistically make the populations equivalent so that you're not looking across the board for, you're looking at the heart attack rate for everyone who's 75 in this county, everybody who's 75 in that county, and the heart attack rate for everybody who's 60 in this county and 60 in this county, so that if you have skewed populations, that you're adjusting them down so you're looking, comparing more apples to apples.
But I don't understand where suicide is comparable to heart attacks.
Well, so.
I can, I can understand your analogy about heart attacks and age and.
Right.
Everything associated with it.
So, suicide rate actually goes up as people get older. Elderly people are more statistically per capita likely to commit suicide than younger people. I know that younger people grabs the headlines, but the majority of suicides actually happen for people who are 60 and older. And so, I'm not sure it makes an enormous difference with this data, but it does make some, and it's just routine. Again, when, when the epidemiologists try to compare county to county, they want to make sure that they're not giving a false impression just because, and I guess maybe another way to, if flipping it around for the county has a much younger population, they're probably having a lot more babies. So, if you had an equal number of infant deaths in the, in the two counties, and again, there's something wrong in the county, it doesn't have that many moms having that many births. So, the, the adjustment, again, is just to make sure that, that we're not, again, maybe I explained it well enough already, but, but we're not looking at some skew just because the populations are very different in composition.
And doc, that's 49 over four years, am I reading correctly?
So, these are, this is five years worth of data.
Five years.
And the value, the county value is the number of suicides per 100,000, or suicide deaths per 100,000 population. So, Prince George's had.
So, we're averaging about 10 a year.
Correct. Which, again.
So, we're far worse than the other counties across.
Well, but those are the, those are the five, five, the five counties have the lowest suicide rates. So, there are other counties that have suicide, the numbers are going to be up to like 30.
Sure, but that, that's a major problem because, I mean, that's almost one a month.
And, and again, I'm, I'm not saying that, that, you know, this is acceptable, that we're continuing to work, but.
Wow.
The, the number of suicides per 100,000 per year in Calver County is better than 19 other counties in the state.
And you're saying it were primarily in, in the older part of the population?
Well, statistically, so when you look at millions of people. Well, statistically. So when you look at millions of people, and again, you know, when you're looking at small populations, you're gonna.
Go ahead and finish.
So, so how about here, doc? I mean, um, because, you know, we worry a lot about children, the COVID piece, kids being home, it was, it was weird, you know? I mean, you, you're so used to social interaction and they spent, you know, almost two years being home and we're hearing so much. How are the kids dealing with this? I mean, are you seeing a trend with children in this, or is it still kinda following the national thing where it's older folks?
So i- as far as actual suicide deaths, it's still very uncommon to see a teenager, uh, in Calvert. Dying by suicide. And, and we've had occasional incidences, but we've not seen a, any kind of dramatic jump. And again, I think, you know, a part of that is availability of help. This is something that's become, I think, more normalized in schools that. It's something that, that, um, students can talk about.
I was gonna say, yeah, people talk about it. Back, back when I was a kid, nobody talked about it. I mean, it just was, it was never talked about. So I mean, at least. It sounds like there's at least a comfort level to, to say, hey, I'm, I'm having problems.
Right. And, and as, you know, I'll talk about as we get to overdoses, that it's really important to us is, you know, the help. Our, our, our local health department is the largest outpatient behavioral health provider in our county, that we maintain access. So. We've worked really hard to make sure that we, we keep an office open up at the beach. We have an office down in Lusby. We have one in Prince Frederick, and then we have the facility over in Barstow, and those facilities treat both mental health issues and substance use issues, not one or the other.
Were you saying that there, now the two don't mix, right? So an overdose doesn't get counted in a suicide?
Correct.
Okay. Two separate.
When, when you see overdose statistics, those are considered unintentional.
Okay.
Which I will say, there are times it is very difficult to discern. But at least in the, and, and these are, uh, up to the, the coroner's office in Baltimore to make an official determination. Uh, we do reviews quarterly. We have a, uh, a, a committee and, uh, made up of people from various organizations. Uh, in the county who get together to discuss overdose deaths that are occurring and how we can continue to work to reduce that. Uh, and, and there are times when we go through very in-depth discussions of what led up to the overdose, that there is ambiguity sometimes.
So I can understand it correctly, those five listed up on the screen, Prince George's has the.
Lowest.
Lowest suicide rate in the state, then Montgomery, then Howard, then Baltimore City. So you're saying we have the fifth lowest suicide rate. Per hundred thousand in the state.
Correct.
Behind those four other jurisdictions.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
So I have one question, and I'm just asking this because I know how the reporting for the COVID was. If you, uh, had COVID but you weren't a Calvert resident type of thing, are these ten suicides Calvert County residents?
Correct. It's, it's determined by your, um, not where the suicide occurs, but the home residence. Home county residence of that individual. Alright, uh, yellow-crowned knight heron. And then, uh, shifting over to overdoses, so, uh, this is not Calvert County-specific. This is, um, state of Maryland data. Going back, uh, about a decade. And you can see how, so the top line, the yellow line is total opioid overdoses. That if you start over, uh, on the left side, the green line is heroin overdoses. And then what starts out as the lower darker blue line are fentanyl overdoses, which really did not really begin until about two thousand and fourteen. You can see around two thousand and seventeen, uh, the overdoses related to fentanyl use, uh, became greater and as a number of. Uh, and, and the heroin overdoses dropped, declined at that point. So you can see as you go over to the far right side of the screen, that almost all of the opioid. Overdoses are, uh, attributable to fentanyl, which we know from previous discussions is, is, is much, much more potent. Uh, and much less expensive, uh, than heroin and almost any other, uh, opioid. So, um, Calvert hit its peak number of overdose deaths, and again, these are unintentional overdose deaths in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, we had thirty-two. And then, uh, we've actually had declining. Numbers since then. So this is, uh, this data is courtesy of our Calvert County Sheriff's Office, and these statistics are through the end of April. And so you can see over the last three and a third years, because obviously twenty twenty-two, we only have, uh, the first four months. That we were seeing, uh, a decrease in fatal overdoses. And then what's, I think, most important for this point in twenty twenty-two. Uh, is that the number of non-fatal overdoses, uh, is down over twenty-five percent if we continue this pace for the rest of the year. And, uh, again, there, there's multiple reasons why, um, that, that's contributing to this. He's important to keep in mind that for non-fatal overdoses, it, um, not only do we not wanna see anyone overdose, even if they survive it. Because if, uh, if you're not breathing for two or three minutes, you're almost certainly losing brain cells during that time. So when people come out of it, even if they're revived. Uh, they may have residual damage. Uh, but from a societal standpoint, it's also an incredible strain on our law enforcement, our EMS resources. And, uh, so by reducing this number of non-fatal overdoses, that we allow our EMS crews to be freed up. Uh, to attend to people with heart attacks, someone gets in a car accident, has a stroke, whatever the need be. Uh, that, uh, they're not spending as much time responding to overdose deaths, and it keeps everyone in the county safer and healthier. So, uh, I put our MCT van or mobile crisis van in the middle. We've talked in the past, I won't, uh, belabor too much. That, uh, and, uh, I guess I'll, I'll note quickly that our, uh, when you adjust for population that are, are non-fatal overdoses. Is about half the rate from our surrounding counties. Um, so a rapid response team or a mobile crisis team, uh, I think has, has been a tremendous benefit. To our partner agencies for EMS and the sheriff's office and state police. Also extremely important, uh, for people with both substance use problems and mental health problems. Because as the second bullet shows, that more than half of overdose victims are, are linked in to ongoing services within twenty-four hours. Of that overdose event. Uh, and we do respond to any type of behavioral health emergency. So someone who may be threatening suicide, uh, we're responding out there. And again, providing services on the spot. We have. A peer counselor, a licensed therapist, and then we have either a nurse practitioner or a physician who's part of the team. So if people need medication, they can get started on medication as a bridge until they can come in for care. And then we do case management, meaning that we don't just give them a card and say, good luck to you, but we follow up. And make sure that if for some reason they can't get in because of transportation issues, they lack health insurance, that we provide resources, uh, in that way. And that also, that model we've used for other programs, including our re-entry program that we partner with our jail. And you can see all the different agencies in the county, uh, that, uh, have been working in partnership, which is just done a tremendous job. In both, um, getting people into treatment and reducing recidivism, uh, for people who have offended. Uh, primarily because of, of drug-related reasons.
Dr. Polsky.
Yes, sir.
On the last slide, who are the folks in the bottom-left corner?
Uh, oh, so that's outdated now. Um, those, uh, were, uh, cause there's been quite a turnover, um, in the judges, uh, in our circuit court.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, actually, uh, I guess I'll need to update with some new photos of our, our new judges. So that does remind me how we've had. Um, you know, uh, other than Judge Tanley, uh, we've had, uh, quite a bit of change. Um, and then this slide is just to impress that, uh, for some people with substance use problems, it is primarily genetic. They just need medication. I shouldn't say just, but if, if they are provided access to medication, then they will do extremely well. There are, uh, many other people who, it's incredibly important to help to stabilize all the chaos that's going on in their lives. So that they can start to make progress, and that is not an easy thing to do. So, uh, this is not, uh, everything. That we do with our case management, but some of the important things. Uh, also mentioned, cause I mentioned our four locations across the county. Uh, that, uh, we do our best to have a licensed therapist in every school and from elementary to high school in our county. Uh, so that, um, that students whose parents otherwise would not be able to get them to a doctor, it would be very disruptive. Cause they would have to miss a lot of school, that they have access right there in the schools. We have, uh, staff in the jail. Uh, helping to provide services before release and then bridging them once they, uh, once they, uh, are released. And we have walk-in availability, uh, Monday through Friday, uh, at our offices. And then we have twenty-four-seven access with our mobile crisis team. Uh, we have some people that go out in the van, uh, and we're responding to multiple calls a day. And we always have somebody left in the office, so that if someone is, cause the hospital's right across the parking lot from us. So if someone's released from the hospital, uh, they don't need emergency room care, uh, we can then transition. And help move them into outpatient care, even if it's, you know, two o'clock on a Saturday morning, uh, or a holiday, whatever. Uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, excuse me, we, we have staff available to help out.
I guess the key message here is that if you know someone or you are having issues, there is help out there. Please reach out.
Thank you. Yes.
The health department, reach out to sheriff's office, EMS, reach out.
Absolutely.
There are resources out there to help you or anyone you may know in need.
And we work with, uh, prime, the primary care doctors, uh, across the county, uh, for people that have an established healthcare provider. They may be able to reach out to their healthcare office, um, and that we, uh, also provide guidance of it, uh, with our mental health staff.
Cause the worst thing is when something happens and people say, well, I didn't know where to go.
Right.
You know, and didn't know there was help out there. That's, that's the worst part of the situation.
Right. So, uh, absolutely. Uh, we, we are there, uh, when people need us.
Before we transition into the next topic.
Yeah.
Back on slide nine, if we could, please.
Yes, sir.
I am blissfully ignorant to a lot of the stuff associated with this. How does a, how does a person who's unfamiliar, whether it be a parent or a sibling, or someone who's. Unfamiliar about any of this, how can they see or identify someone near them that could have an addiction problem? And how do they determine what that might be? Because I see where heroin went down, fentanyl went up. I thought that fentanyl was added into heroin or something like that. I, and again, I don't, I, I'm.
Yeah, so.
I don't understand.
Fent- fentanyl is a distinct opioid. It's a member of the same general family. It's easily and very inexpensively synthesized. Heroin comes from a poppy plant. Uh, there is a little bit of modification to it, but it's pretty much a natural product. Fentanyl is just, you make it in a lab. Um, and, and because it was much cheaper, uh, and much more potent. Uh, it was easier to smuggle because a very small amount is easy to hide. Um, and it was much less expensive for those who were dealing distributing. So it was a more cost-effective product.
But isn't that added to something else, or is that a standalone?
Well, it, it's always mixed in with something because it's so potent that if, if you, uh, just had it pure, it would kill everybody. Um, what it's mixed in with is usually filler. It's usually something that doesn't, uh, lend to a high. And that's part of the danger, is that people are also injecting or, or snorting, inhaling, uh, in other products. That, uh, are not what they intended, and sometimes can have some either immediate or long-term, um, health problems as well.
Appreciate your explanation. I was in an Aventis weekend, and one of the, not common themes. But one of the things I heard a couple of times was, I had no idea. How does, how do family members? Is, how do, how do family members get educated enough to be able to?
It's difficult. I, 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 there's a couple of people that have passed, and I, I saw the same question. I'm going, how did I not know this? There's one young girl, it still bothers me today. How did I not know this? It, it's difficult. It re- it really, I don't know that.
Do the hea- does the health department offer, for lack of a better term, education or training on identifying? Substance abuse?
We do, and, uh, and, and so we, we do, um, very, we're, we're out of health fairs all the time. And one of the things that we talk about is substance use. We go into the schools, we talk about it, we, not only for students, we talk to staff. So, because a teacher may notice something that seems different. Uh, but as Commissioner Hart said, that there, people, um, have. Very good ways of, of masking. Problems. And, and also, and this is not to fault anybody, but especially when it's somebody that we care deeply about. Sometimes we don't always wanna see what we don't wanna see. And, and so, um, sometimes there are signs. I don't wanna say it's impossible. Uh, but we encourage, whether it's for parents or for a spouse, partner, uh, that. If you start to see oftentimes behavioral changes, sometimes it's, it's mood, people become very irritable, um, disrupted sleep patterns. And for all these things, there are other explanations. And so, and that's one of the things that makes it tricky. That habits start to change, you know, spending, you know, time away from others that they normally didn't, it's difficult to account for. And.
It's not as physical as like some things, like an alcohol addiction. You know, you can see the shakes and everything like that, you know, like, uh. It, it's, it's, it's just, and, and docs definitely more trained, but it's the people that I've known. It, I, 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 I was blown away when I, when I found out.
And I've, I've heard, I've heard a lot of those stories, and I, I'm not trying to belabor this, but I think that this is a very, very important thing. I can go online and I can Google any topic that I wanna Google. Sometimes I come up with scary results, sometime it comes up with valid results, but. Who knows what the validity is behind it? The old joke is, well, if it's on the internet, it must be true. Does the Board of Health have any kind of library of videos or educational material? That will help teach parents, specifically parents, not necessarily the professional school teachers and/or. Police departments or health officials, but parents specifically what to look for. Um, you know, if these are typical hiding spots that you might find in your child's room. Things like that, that, that can come from a reliable source as a health department, to where the parents know. It, it adds a bit of legitimacy to the literature and video.
Yeah, so, um, not only is the health department talking, but sheriff's office has been very, very involved, again, going back a good decade now. Um, giving presentations and, and making resources available as well. So I'll take a look to see, because sometimes we put things. Available online, but over time, they start to get buried. Um, that's one thing about online resources. It's so inexpensive to do that, you know, they're there, but they're now four hundred posts down, and it's hard to find. Uh, so, uh, and I think, uh, in typical years, when the school year starts, that's a time where we have parents' interests. Um, and, uh, we show up at as many back-to-school days as we have staff to cover. Uh, which is almost all the schools, to make sure that, that at least for middle school and high schools, but we know that there's also. Potential, as much as we hate to think about it, even for fourth and fifth graders to, uh, start to get into things, uh, and. So, uh, again, uh, you know, with the new school superintendent coming in, there's a lot of topics that. When July first hits, that we'll start to bring up. And again, an excellent time, uh, to make sure that parents really have. Um, access to the best resources that they can.
Thank you. And if not, I'm sure there's grant money out there galore for that.
Well, and we've done all this before, so it's just a question of making sure that it's currently accessible. And, uh, and that's, you know, not a problem. That, that will be a priority for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may, real quick, uh, Mark Willis, county administrator, one of the things that we are very cognizant of is, uh, you know, the commissioners make comments about certain items. And the, the health aspect that you're speaking about right now is something we've paid attention to. Uh, we do have training within our HR department that is reasonable suspicion. It's, uh, training that goes out to our supervisors. And any staff that would like to take it, but it's mandatory for some. It's also mandatory for our commercial driver's license holders. And, uh, the, the deputy administrators actually working on a project with health officials. To bring additional information to the Board of County Commissioners for presentation in the future. We still have to develop it, but. It's something that we'll be working with Doc Polsky and other individuals as we go forward, based on your conversations about health.
Thank you.
Authentic Texas Roadrunner. They do not see beep beep, so. You can't trust every cartoon, you see. Uh, and then just an idea of, you know, us being, our health departments have being out and about. Uh, and I do wanna point out that in June, there are two men's health expos that bracket Father's Day. Men tend to seek healthcare less often, so for COVID, uh, in particular, we have, uh, less men are diagnosed with COVID, but more men die from COVID. And since I had the Roadrunner, I thought I would put up a. And since I had the Roadrunner, I thought I would put up a coyote.
Coyote.
That's right. And then we'll finish up with COVID. So unfortunately, cases are rising significantly again. Over the last month, we've had about a three and a half fold increase in cases in the county, and I will say that this strain that we're dealing with, the BA two point twelve point two, is not causing as much severe illness, thankfully, as we've seen in the past. Again, this slide I put in about eight days ago, the total number of hospitalizations for people with COVID was three hundred and thirty-six the prior Monday. As of today's stats, it's up to four hundred and sixty-eight, so that's a forty percent increase over eight days, and the number of people in ICU has doubled over the past eight days. It's still less than we were seeing in terms of hospitalizations with the Delta wave, despite more infections than we were seeing in the Delta wave, but still people...
And that's statewide, correct?
That, that is statewide, no, I'm sorry, the, the slide that's up there right now is statewide, and this slide is, is for our county.
All right. When you said the hospitalizations have doubled, that was statewide.
Hospitalizations, ICU hospitalizations have doubled statewide, hospitalizations in general up forty percent over the last, little bit over a week. There were seven Calvert County residents last week who were hospitalized with a diagnosis of COVID. Five of them were hospitalized outside of the county, so I don't have details, the two, at least as of yesterday, who were hospitalized locally, one was in the ICU and one was on the ward, or in the general medical ward. They're both hospitalized primarily because of COVID.
As you mentioned earlier, you said monkeypox is not new. You said it's been around fifty-plus years, this and that. I remember seeing a Lysol container quite a while back in, that was sitting on a shelf from the two thousands, that said kills COVID, or kills ninety-nine point nine percent of viruses, and it said COVID on it, and it was from late nineties. COVID's been around quite a while, correct?
No, I can't imagine that there was a can of Lysol from the nineteen nineties that would have said anything about COVID on there.
Coronavirus, it said coronavirus diseases.
Oh, coronavirus, okay.
Sorry, because COVID is coronavirus disease. C-O is Corona, V-I is virus, D is disease.
You're correct, it is a member of the coronavirus family.
Okay.
But it was, this specific virus did not exist back in the nineteen nineties.
Well, but, and again, I'm not a virologist, but viruses are consistent, and I, I don't want to get too far off, but if we do a test for COVID today, does that include all of the different possible variants of COVID, or is that specifically for COVID nineteen? Because at this point, we're kind of into COVID twenty-two, I would think.
So the, the testing we have, regardless of whether you have the original strain from back late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, or you have the Alpha, or the Delta, or one of the many Omicron variants, it will test positive for all of those. If you have a non-COVID member of coronavirus, if you have a common cold, that will not test positive.
Okay, you said something that I didn't pique, pique my interest. You said if you have a coronavirus disease, it's not COVID. But I thought coronavirus disease, I thought COVID was the abbreviation of the acronym for coronavirus disease. C-O-V-I-D.
So, there's a, a large family, there are seven strains of COVID that potentially can infect human, I'm sorry, there are seven strains of coronavirus that can infect human Those up to now have been more of the common cold variety. There are other strains of coronavirus that exist in animals that do not infect human beings. I think there's, it's been a while since I looked, but I think there's over fifty different strains that are out there. COVID is a distinct member of that family, so think about, there are a lot of primates. Human beings are in the primate family, but we are distinct from gorillas, we are distinct from spider monkeys, we are distinct from, so just because you're a member of a general biological class doesn't make you equivalent or behave the same way, or be susceptible to the same antivirals, or be detected by the same manner. So again, the, you know, the spike protein gets talked about a lot, so that is distinct from other members of the coronavirus family, and so the vaccines were developed specifically for that spike protein, they don't protect against other members of the coronavirus family, so they're not going to protect you against a common cold.
Okay. If a person were to test positive for the coronavirus disease that you called the common cold, you said the common cold, coronavirus disease, part of one of the, apparently the common cold is part of the coronavirus disease is what I just picked up from what you said, would that also test positive as a quote-unquote COVID-positive test?
No. So they're, they're testing for distinct parts of the virus molecule. And, and so, so we were talking about monkeypox before, same family as smallpox, it would be a distinct test, same family, but they, there are structural differences between smallpox and monkeypox, test is designed to key on the unique parts of the virus so that you don't mistakenly say that somebody has monkeypox and they really have smallpox. And the same thing with COVID, you don't want to mistakenly diagnose somebody with a common cold when they really have COVID and could end up with life-threatening complications.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Okay. So I guess the silver lining, and I don't want to be insensitive to people who've lost family members to COVID, or people who've lost close friends to COVID, but in our county, we have the lowest COVID, continue to have the lowest COVID hospitalization rate of the twenty-four jurisdictions in Maryland, so the average Calvert resident is thirty-eight percent likely, less likely to have been hospitalized due to COVID since the beginning of the pandemic than the average Marylander. Since the state cybersecurity breach, we've not been able to get county-by-county mortality statistics, so we're into the sixth month of that, but the county health rankings showed our mortality rate as forty-three percent below the state average, so again, this is data that was as of December of last year, not coming up to current. And we have had one death related to COVID in the past six weeks in the county. Rattlesnake that was nice enough to be about two and a half feet away, and my wife was nice enough to distract it as I took a picture.
Are you that close, huh?
It was, um...
And he let his wife distract the snake.
I caught that, I, I caught.
That's what I caught, I caught.
You see where the tail is, and then the, the bigger loop that's adjacent to the tail, it, it, it's a little hard to tell from that angle, but it looks like there is, whatever it had for, for breakfast that day is making its way through. So it wasn't very interested in us, it just wanted us to leave it alone.
See, it looks agitated.
So as we were unintentionally walking very close to it, we did get that nice little rattle, and we respected its space.
Potentially did that.
Yes, yes.
Ah-ha.
Yes.
All right, now that the screen has changed, I know my wife is watching at home, it's okay, honey, to come back in the room at this point, that screen is off.
And so just to quickly roll through the last few slides, again, I think everybody knows that COVID has unfortunately risen up the ranks in, in leading cause of death in this country, so for the last two years, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, other than heart disease and cancer, COVID was responsible for more deaths across the country than anything else. Did make a point that influenza, which typically ranks around seventh or eighth, has dropped off as people have taken some precautions against COVID. I presume influenza will show back up again in years to come. And liver disease, for the first time, made an appearance in the top ten. Suicide, which was also in the top ten, now down to number eleven. These are javalinas, these are indigenous members of the pig family, it's a new world, the pigs that we have on farms, those are old world, over from Europe or Central Asia, wherever they originated. And then I just want to finish up with long COVID. So I'm sure that a lot of people have seen various bits, either on the internet, or on the news, or maybe from their doctor, or they've experienced themselves. So long COVID, this is a topic that is still being researched within the medical field. Currently, it's being defined as anyone who has symptoms persisting beyond four weeks of their initial infection. Studies are showing at least five to ten percent of people who develop COVID are having longer-term symptoms, and that five to ten percent is in, what studies are showing in children. For adults, we're seeing higher. The most recent study I saw over the weekend was a pretty large study, multi-center study, and they even are distinguishing between age brackets, so for those under age thirty-five, in that study, twenty-six percent of, of adults continued to have symptoms after four weeks, and for those fifty and over, it was forty-seven percent continued to have symptoms beyond four weeks. The other important thing from this slide is that we, studies, studies plural, have shown that for people who are vaccinated, if they do get COVID, they are significantly less likely to have sustained symptoms, so most of the studies are showing a number right around five times less likely than people who are unvaccinated. Some symptoms are what I would consider quality of life, fatigue, shortness of breath, people having difficulty concentrating, remembering things, and then cough that doesn't threaten their health. Now, you can imagine for a child who is having concentration problems, trying to sit there and learn in class, or completing their homework, not a trivial thing. But the other thing that's very concerning at this point is that there was a large study out of the VA system that followed people for a year after their diagnosis, and they found a significant increase in new onset diabetes, and within the year after that COVID diagnosis, where people who were type two diabetics now needing insulin to control their diabetes. They saw a significant increase in heart attacks, arrhythmias, strokes, put everything on there, kidney disease, chronic lung inflammation. So these are, you know, the, I think from a physiologic standpoint, the really, the biggest difference with COVID is it incites a much larger inflammatory response for some people inside their bodies, and it's likely, although not proven at this point, but likely underlying these continued health complications. And there is concern system-wide about the potential strain on the healthcare system if we see, you know, maybe tens of thousands, or hundreds of thousands more people with significant health problems in the, in the couple of years to come. And my last critter for the day, Desert Big Horn Sheep, who's losing its winter coat just in time because it was getting a little warm out there. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Doc.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
Are any of the persistent health risks, are, has, there's been a lot of talk about side effects of any of the vaccines, or some of the vaccines, J and J, for example, is no longer authorized and whatnot, from what I hear, there's a hard pause on it. Are any of those strokes, heart attacks, stuff like that associated with the vaccines?
So just to clarify, Johnson-Johnson has not been pulled off the market, it is now considered a second line, yet for some reason someone can't or won't take either the Moderna or Pfizer vaccines, still the risks of getting the Johnson-Johnson vaccine are much, much less than the risks of getting COVID. The concerns with the Johnson-Johnson are primarily blood clot risks, which are rare, but can be fatal, and I'm blanking on the other at the moment. But, so the, what the, the, the reason that that has been downgraded is that, again, slightly higher risks of serious complication, but then the others, they're just not as effective, the Johnson-Johnson is just not as effective as the Moderna and the Pfizer. So I've been advising people all along that it is in your best interest to be vaccinated with either the Moderna or Pfizer, there are very, very slight differences between the two. The only serious side effect that we have seen with either the, the, of the mRNA vaccines, the Moderna or Pfizer, is a slight increase in the risk of myocarditis, and these are almost always in young males, so under the age of thirty. And you have to balance that with it, when young males get virus infections, they have a significant increased risk in myocarditis. And so the pediatric experts have said that the risk of myocarditis from a COVID infection is greater than the risk of myocarditis from the vaccine, so even in that population, the benefits still outweigh the risks.
Got you.
And I will just finish up by saying that I still would strongly recommend not just the initial two vaccines, but people should look at this as a three-dose series, that that booster dose has shown to be a really significant benefit for people. I am in my fifties, I have not gotten a second booster. I think the evidence is not as strong for people who are in reasonably good health and are under the age of seventy. My dad is in his early eighties, and he has insulin-dependent diabetes. I recommend it for him to get a second booster, and I've actually recommended for him to continue to get boosters every four to six months until we have an alternative, just like a maintenance medication for people who have chronic illnesses. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to do appointments under new business, or you want to do them now?
I think you need to do them now.
Okay.
Under the Board of Health. All right, you ready?
Deputy Administrator Vasallo.
All right, good morning, Commissioners, we have several names to appoint, there are several individuals to appoint this morning for the local Behavioral Health Advisory Council. We're asking that you reappoint Cheryl Harms as a Designee DSS Representative, Christine Flaherty as the Hospital Representative, Lauren Jokel, Residential Program Representative, Dan Janelle Johnson, Member of the Public, Doris McDonald, County Behavioral Health Director, Megan Sirakaya, Consumer, Cynthia Scribner is a Designee for DJS, Nicole Ukamene, Ukamene, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, who's a Parent Representative, Margaret Van Acker, as a Clergy Representative, Joshua Underwood is a Designee from the Detention Center, and Candace DiAgostino as the Advocate from the Advocacy Agency. And then your new members would be Paula Hummett, who is also a Consumer, Ariane Odom, who is a Designee for the County Commissioners, and Antoine White, who would be an at-large member.
Should I move?
Second.
Have motion, and a second, that we appoint, reappoint and appoint those individuals that Deputy Administrator has named. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. So I believe that ends our business as the County Board of Health.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Second.
Have motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Department of Parks and Rec.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation. So this is a public hearing for the purpose of considering and receiving comments regarding approval of budget adjustment BA two one seven, making available three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand for the construction of the clubhouse at Chesapeake Hills Golf Course. County has adopted guidelines for conduct at public hearings as detailed in Resolution six dash eighty-nine. This hearing will be executed to comply with that resolution. The hearing has been duly advertised, and there is a certification publication in our files that constitutes the record of this hearing. A sign-in sheet has been provided for speakers and is located on the podium to the left behind me. If they're in-person speakers, I will call the speakers to the microphone before the public hearing is concluded. You'll be called up in the order that you have signed up. Please limit your comments to two minutes if you are commenting as an individual, or five minutes if speaking on behalf of an organization. Please speak directly into the microphone so that viewers of the tape broadcast will be able to hear your comments, along with those in attendance today. If you wish to provide con, comment via telephone, please call eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, or eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven, meeting ID eight nine nine four one eight 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 two five one. Pass code, if asked, is pound request to speak star nine. I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course was obtained by Calvert County in two thousand and eight. Since that time, there has been a need for continuing improvements to the building and course. On January seventh, two thousand and eighteen, a winter storm with very low temperatures caused overhead water pipes to fail in three locations. pipes to fail in three locations at the clubhouse. The clubhouse had not been in use since that time and was demolished in May of 2019. Funding was allocated for design and construction with the project going out to construction bid in 2022. With the pricing of construction increasing, the cost of the project has increased. Discussion, the cost of the construction project is now estimated at $6,708,179, which includes base construction, gas service, low voltage service, furniture fixtures and equipment, as well as a 10% contingency. There is an amount currently budgeted of $3,543,179, which leaves a balance needed of $3,175,000. $175,000 will be utilized from a project that came in under budget at Howling Point Park. To account for the additional $3 million needed, a loan agreement will be put in place with the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course to initiate payment, a payment term, term over 20 years for repayment back to the general fund. A budget adjustment of this amount should be accounted for in the FY 2022 budget. The budget adjustment requires a public hearing as it is in excess of $150,000. Fiscal impact, if improved, this will amend the adopted budget for FY 2022 to appropriate and allocate $3,175,000 for the construction of the clubhouse at Chesapeake Hills Golf Course through a loan from the general fund of $3 million, and by moving $175,000 from account 432002-45006, Howling Point Park restroom snack stand construction, to fund $3,175,000 to account 431201-45006 to Chesapeake Hills Golf Course clubhouse construction. The loan will be repaid annually through an unsecured promissory note from operating account 8701210-30560, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Administration, Note to General Fund, beginning in FY 2024. The unsecured promissory note would be promptly signed upon approval of the budget adjustment by the Director of Parks and Recreation. Conclusion, recommendation, staff recommends that after taking public comment, the Board of County Commissioners close the record. Staff will return in 10 days to request the Board of County Commissioners' approval of BA 217, and request the Board of County Commissioners sign the related budget resolution. And I will see if anyone has requested to speak.
No one has signed up to speak. There is one person who's joined us virtually. If she wishes to provide comment, please raise your hand. No, Mr. President, she has not raised her hand.
So gentlemen, have questions? Actions?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve BA 217 and close the record.
Second.
Actually cannot legally approve the budget adjustment today, you're just being asked to close the record and we'll return.
Okay, okay, so the motion, the motion is just to?
Close the record.
Just to close the record?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
So, second.
And I have motion and a second, that we close the record. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we'll see you back in 10 days.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Commissioner Gadway.
Good morning. Is there someone here from the American Legion or in reference to Poppy Day, or Veterans' Please introduce yourself to the mic and come on up.
Joyce Backy, I'm Unit President of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 274.
Janice Marcellus Ward, I'm the past President of VA Stallings-Williams, Unit 206, in Chesapeake Beach Auxiliary.
Thank you, come on up.
I'd like to note that we have two other units, and unfortunately, they had some losses this, in the past two weeks, so they are not going to be able to attend.
Fabulous.
We lost residents.
Please go ahead and hand them out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think she got too many.
You got them all. You gotta check one, pass them on.
I think she gave them all to you.
Oh. Thank you.
He doesn't need a bouquet. Thank you. I can't get it into the appelle that quick with one hand, so it's gonna go there for now. I would like to comment, I've had the opportunity to travel to quite a few different countries, and as the poppy is, we'll read about in the proclamation a little bit, it does go back to World War I, and in Belgium, and France, and throughout all of Europe, Canada, it's, England, it's, it is a worldwide or northern hemisphere, to the best of my knowledge. It's very important. It's very important that we, that we understand that the poppy symbolizes so much and so many lives. And, so I don't try and undo the justice, I'm gonna just go ahead and get into the proclamation. Whereas, poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans and service members. And whereas, at the end of World War I, the American Legion family adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and the blood sacrificed by troops in war times. The symbolic use of the poppy comes from the poem In Flanders' Fields, which movingly begins, "In Flanders' fields the poppies blow, between the crosses, row and row," referring to the poppies that spring up in the churned-up earth of newly dug soldiers' graves over parts of Belgium and France. The American Legion family has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in the US military, mirroring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England and Canada in celebratory fashion on their Remembrance Day, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas, wearing a poppy will unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that May 27th, 2022 be known as Poppy Day, to commemorate the sacrifice of service members in our country and county. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners encourages all citizens to join in observing this day of honor, every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veterans, service members, and their families. Given under our hands and seal this 24th day of May, 2022, signed by all Commissioners. Would either of you like to say anything, or can people stop by if they happen to be going by a legion or something and pick up poppies?
You know me, I never stop talking. The poppy is the symbol, and poppies are available at all of the American Legions. But I need you to understand, a lot of times we put a little donation jar, and the reason why is because our units, our post, our American Legion family, makes a point of paying service to our veterans, both living and dead. One of the ways that we have done service in the last three years during COVID is that the four units in Calvert County have made a point of making sure that our veterans at Charlotte Hall and at the Washington VA Hospital have not gone without. In the last three years, I was adding it up with department earlier, yesterday, in the last three years, we have donated more than $75,000 worth of goods, and we make monthly drops to Charlotte Hall. All the money that we collect in the donation jars from poppies directly goes back to our veterans. So, that's another thing that you can always do, because every month, we take a drop to Charlotte Hall. And we take everything from sweets, and one of their favorite things is cheese puffs, to clothing, to razors, to games, to books, to everything. And I also want to make a shout-out to the Calvert Marine Museum, because they have been partnering with us for the last three years in doing this. And I know that you all have several organizations that partner with you. We work as a unit. We're a team, and our team not only is the auxiliary, but it's also the post and our Sons of the American Legion. And we do all kinds of things for our veterans, and they're important. So if you feel that you need, or that you would like to do something, contact one of us. We'll be glad to give you a list, because, believe me, we've got lists. We not only do for the veterans, every year we do Give Ten to Education, we've provided schools with all kinds of donations for the kids that may not have enough. We have donated to Project Echo on a regular basis. We, we recently did a coat drive over the winter, took down, I know we took down 40 coats, you all took down probably about the same. And it just is something that, it's important, because we are giving back to our community, and we want you to. And, call me. You might be eligible to join the American Legion, we'd love to have you as a legionnaire or an auxiliary member, or a member of the Sons of the American Legion. And you can ask us how to become a member. That's it, thank you.
You know, when we have the Memorial Day and Veterans' Day events that we have, this is where you'll see the poppies the most of the time. You'll see somebody sitting there, and we hand them out then. But the most rewarding thing about being with the American Legion Auxiliary is seeing the smiles on those veterans that come in, because we have them come up to the legion on the Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. Just the, the smiles, they are, they love, love to be around different people, and it's just so rewarding to deal and to see the veterans and to work with them. Thank you.
Is there anything going on Monday?
Monday, and Monday, at 10:00 AM, there will be a memorial service at, now, 10:00 AM is a memorial service at the Solomon's United Methodist Church Cemetery, which is where Eric L. Lor, who was killed by a sniper shot, is buried. He was killed in World War I. And then at 1:00 PM, right here on the courthouse lawn, there will be a service that's held annually.
And then they'll jack some open houses.
Oh, and Chesapeake Beach, yes.
Yeah, Chesapeake Beach, I think is at 11:00 AM on Monday, but they have it down at the Veterans Park.
And as this is the last meeting that we will have in this month, being Armed Forces' Month, thank you for finishing off the Armed Forces Appreciations in such a poignant manner. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good seeing you. Good seeing you. Good seeing you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
the camera as well, so she's now a dual threat.
Duties as assigned. So, the next item on the agenda is consent. We have several consent items today. Number one, Department of Public Safety Budget Adjustment for Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Number two, Department of Public Safety Budget Adjustment Federal Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant. Item three, Department of Public Safety FY 2022 Advanced Life Support Education Grant. Number four, Department of Public Works Water Tower Lease Agreements. Item five, Department of Community Resources Twin Beaches Library Capital Grant Letter of Intent. Are there any objections to the consent items? Hearing none, the consent items will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business, Department of Human Resources. It says Melanie.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director.
Deana Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director.
Good morning.
So I'm gonna read the memo, Commissioners, and then Deana is gonna go into the presentation. Today, we are here to present to you the Impaired Operator Prevention Policy. Background, the Board of County Commissioners requested a review of the current post-accident drug and alcohol procedures. Discussion, Section 9.09 of the Risk Management and Safety Manual includes post-accident procedures, and there is a corresponding work rule in Personnel Chapter 86 of the County Code. Fiscal impact, the increase in the number of drug and alcohol tests will impact departmental budgets. Conclusion, recommendation, the Department of Human Resources will present proposed changes to Section 9.09 Post Accident Procedures of the Risk Management and Safety Manual and Personnel Chapter 86 of the County Code. Commissioners, we have prepared a short presentation on the proposed impaired operator The background, the current post-accident, post-vehicle accident procedure is spelled out in the Risk Management and Safety Manual. The current policy is based on the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administrations' post-accident testing requirements for CBL drivers. It is not the same, it is similar. There is an associated work rule in the County Code, Personnel Chapter 86. We'll go into this further later, but the Risk Management and Safety Manual is approved by the Board by Resolution, and the code changes require a public hearing and Board This is a brief synopsis of the change we are bringing forward today. Our objective is to require all employees and operator of vehicles or equipment who did or could have contributed to an incident submit to drug and alcohol testing. We will also rename the policy to the impaired operator prevention policy. As I stated, there are specific circumstances where we currently require post-accident testing. The policy currently applies to employees driving a county vehicle or using heavy equipment, and also to employees driving their personal vehicle on county business. The column on the left is our current policy. We require testing after a vehicle accident if an individual dies, suffers bodily injury, or receives medical treatment away from the accident, if one or more of the vehicles involved is disabled, if the driver receives a citation, at the discretion of the supervisor or at the employee's request, or for heavy equipment incidents if the property, if property damage occurs. On the left, on the right is our proposed change. We will require testing for all employee vehicle, vessel, heavy equipment incidents that result in damage to the vehicle or any other property. It would apply to employees operating county vehicles, vessels, heavy equipment, or their own personal vehicle while counting, conducting county business. This is our proposed change to the work rule. It will mirror the language in the Risk Management and Safety Manual. The premise of the changes is to refute the presumption of being under the influence where a county employee involved in a vehicle incident. Refusal will result in disciplinary action and may include reimbursement to the county. There will be a fiscal impact to the county. Currently, drug and alcohol testing is paid by each individual department. We anticipate the change in the policy may result in 20 to 30 additional tests per year. The difference in prices that you see there, $45 to $125 per test for drug testing, or $25 to $125 per test for alcohol. That depends on when the incident occurs. The higher cost there would be if it is after hours, or if our drug testing contractor has to go to the hospital, for example, to test the employee there. If we assume that there are 30 drug and alcohol tests added each year at a cost of $70, it would be $2,100 per year. And again, that money would be paid out of individual department budgets. The steps to revise the policy, the Risk Management and Safety Manual will require a resolution. We would meet again with you in public session. This would change the title of the policy and change the parameters. In order to change the Personnel Chapter of the County Code, the work rule, so that it mirrors the language in the Risk Management and Safety Manual, we would come before you with a public hearing and return after 10 days for the Board to vote. That is the end of my presentation.
So are there any questions? So today, we're just updating our policy to make sure we have authority to take action if there is an event.
Today, we're asking to come back before you in, as an old business item.
Start to process.
Yes, exactly.
Right. So the action?
Is it just a consensus, Mr. President, or do you need a motion?
We'll take, we'll make a motion.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the efforts and work that has been put into this. I know that there's been a lot of interaction with county employees, a lot of questions asked, all of them were great questions. I think the, I don't know, you can help me out, the dialogue and the question and answer of the thoughts, there was well over 100, 200, something like that.
Yes, we did send the changes around to all of the department heads for employee feedback. And the Commissioners were provided with that and provided an opportunity to read each and every one of those comments that was presented.
Right. And I got through the vast majority of them. And, you know, one of the things that I take away from this is, in the old language, the word "accident" was used. In the new language, the word "incident" is used. And I think it's safe to say that something falling out of the sky, i.e. a rock, that happens to hit the windshield and chip a windshield is not what we're trying to address here.
Correct.
That is not a collision. That is a, that actually, in my opinion, would be considered an accident. You know, you could not avoid it, you know, everything else. An incident is a collision that can be avoidable through a myriad of different possibilities. So thank you for working so hard on the language and everything else. I truly appreciate it.
Is there a motion?
I do have a question in reference to the motion possibilities. Mr. Attorney, what has been provided to us? Is this a one, two, three step, or do we look at the third as the, as the final? Not sure how to make this motion.
So the third was an additional step that the Board may wish to choose.
Okay.
To direct us to pursue.
All right. And before I make that motion, I just want to briefly throw it out there because the motion would take what you guys have here, it's my understanding, and then add a budget adjustment that would revoke. I'll read the motion, and then we can see if it's second and we can discuss. I apologize. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to a public hearing with a budget adjustment that revokes the county's 2023 expenditures on vehicles and equipment from outside agencies unless that agency adopts a conforming policy similar to this no later than December 31, 2022.
Sir, a second.
Second for discussion.
Absolutely. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
So this would move, this would move the policy forward, correct, as well, no, it would not?
What I understood the Commissioner to read was just number three, which was to take to public hearing a budget adjustment which only impacts outside agencies. Number.
You got to do.
Okay. That's what I was asking, a step one, two, three.
Three is optional, but if you wish to proceed with this.
Got it.
And if you want to just end that, then all three.
Beat, beat, beat back the bus up without hitting anything. So I rescind my previous motion.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Okay, so that's it.
Motion fails.
Okay. I'd like to correct myself with the proper motion, to proceed to public hearing with the proposed amendment to the county's personnel code.
See, I got all confused. Okay.
So did I. Stop there or continue?
You're welcome to continue.
You can continue if you want.
And return with a resolution to amend the Risk Management and Safety Manual, and then proceed to a public hearing with a budget adjustment that revokes the county's FY 2023 expenditures on vehicles and equipment for outside agencies unless they have, unless that agency adopts a conforming policy no later than December 31, 2026. So it's a three-step motion. One, puts it to public hearing, and then create, and in addition to that, has the hearing for the.
Budget adjustment.
Budget adjustments if need be. Thank you.
Second, okay, that's what I thought we were doing, is to get it to public hearing. Okay.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, Department of Economic Development.
Julie. Good morning. Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. I'll go ahead and read the memo to get us started. The College of Southern Maryland, CSM, implemented a COVID-19 vaccination requirement on January 18, 2022. That policy requires nearly all employees and students to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19. CSM's policy currently provides for exemptions and automatic waivers. An exemption is available for a CSM employee or student who is required to be vaccinated but is seeking a medical or religious exemption from the requirement. CSM also administers automatic waivers to dual-enrolled students, fully online or taking courses at an off-site location, continuing education students taking a one-day class, and for contract training courses. Automatic waivers are also provided for contractors performing work on CSM campuses as addressed in their contracts. The Board of Trustees of CSM is currently considering its COVID-19 regulations for the upcoming fall semester and is anticipated to reach a decision in July. Fiscal impact, none. Recommendation for, this is for informational purposes unless the Board of County Commissioners should wish to direct staff to prepare correspondence to the CSM Board of Trustees regarding this matter.
Thank you. So a little more background, we did receive a request from our brothers in St. Mary's County Commissioners. They are directing a letter to object to the vaccination requirements at CSM, and they asked us if we would join in that request, so.
If I could, sir, it wasn't actually to ask them to, it was to ask them to maybe reconsider their policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a little lighter.
Has anybody reached out to them to possibly have a discussion with them about it prior to sending a letter?
They said they're going to take the, take it under consideration again in July.
Delegate Matt Morgan reached out to them originally, and they responded back to his email or to his letter explaining that they would revisit it July 15th, make a final decision based on metrics. From everything that I can understand, the vaccine does not and cannot inhibit the transmission of COVID. And I don't understand where the vaccine mandates come in, to the point where I believe that there's been quite a few governmental and corporate vaccine mandates that have fallen to different court decisions across our country. I'm personally against mandates, and I would be in support of offering a polite letter to the college to ask them to reconsider what some people call discriminatory practices.
My question is, who is mandating anything right now? I mean, does the federal government have any mandates in, or state, or local, or anything? I mean, where's this coming from? I mean, uh.
Well, in the letter, it did address that in the state of Maryland, Maryland University, I believe, and please don't quote me, I'm going off of memory off the letter, but to summarize, not word for word, but summarize, where the University of Maryland has a mandate policy in place, and the college answered Delegate Morgan's original letter with, "Our sister educational organizations also have a vaccine mandate." Delegate Morgan's response was, "The sister organizations in Maryland may, but the cousin educational institutions in Virginia do not." It seems to be a state-by-state, some states are saying, okay, we're going to go ahead and allow the mandates in, other states, educational facilities in other states are saying, we're going to eliminate them. So in Virginia, for example, those have been eliminated, but apparently in Maryland, University of Maryland still has some of those on the books.
I mean, I'm fine with a letter, but I would, before we send the letter, I would give them an opportunity to, you know, reach out to them like Matt Morgan did and have them maybe respond back to us prior to sending the letter. We've always had a good working relationship with them, so I think communicating with them might be.
Well, that's, I believe that's what we're trying to do here, is generate that letter to open the dialogue and the communication.
Right, because if you listen to the list of exemptions, I don't know who's actually going to be required to get a vaccination.
Well, it's my understanding that when they voted on it, it was a very close vote, so there's people on both sides of the spectrum on their board. So that's why I'm saying, I think reaching out to them might, might be beneficial to keep a good working relationship, you know. Like I said, like Commissioner Gaddy said, a gentle, a gentle letter.
Here's the problem, too. This college is some, is the only college that some people will afford to go to.
Yeah.
It's the only opportunity for so many folks. You've got to be very careful when you start saying who can come in and who can't. And so I would like to know what the basis is. I mean, Commissioner Gaddy brings up a good point with vaccinations. School system doesn't do it. I'm not just trying to, where's this coming from? I mean, I understand, everybody wants to be safe at the end of the day. Nobody wants anybody hurt, but to say that a child can't go to school, that's a tough one. I, you know, I'd like to know why. I mean, I get what you're saying on premise, but we're in here today, and there's no vaccination requirement at that door, or at grocery stores, or anything else like that. So I think it opens up a door that I, and I'm just being honest, I'm opening myself for criticism I don't understand. I just don't, so I, I don't want any, I don't want anybody not given an opportunity to go to school.
So we could draft a letter that raises our concern about the issues of a mandatory vaccination policy and the impact it may have on students that went to attend the local community college. I'm in favor of that.
And it also goes both ways because there will be people that won't put their kid in school if people aren't vaccinated, and there's people that won't go to it because they have to be vaccinated. So it's a double-edged sword, it really is. I mean, you're never going to make everybody happy.
Rule of unintended consequences.
So where are we, gentlemen?
I'm in favor of a letter.
And make a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we send a letter inquiring everything you just said.
Motion, what he said.
I mean, can we get a copy of the letter and review it before it's sent? Can we do that?
Yeah, absolutely. But the genesis of the letter is that we're concerned about, you know, vaccination mandate and the impact it may have on students' ability to.
Did you see the consensus for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. How about that?
Let's go. Please.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not going to draw any lines in the sand today.
Right.
We didn't say anything about how much we fund them.
That brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney.
There is no one joining us virtually. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to provide public comment?
Well, this will be unusual.
None.
We have some friends that usually join us every Tuesday.
Well, I'm glad to see Joseph Cormier is on vacation, and he's not calling in because he's having a good time. And so he did take off a week of politics, so that's good. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner McConkey. So if there are no public comment today, that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart.
As Commissioner President said, we were all at the Bridge yesterday for a discussion of the future events there, what they had on, then last week, we also were at Tuxton Business Park for groundbreaking, as that is coming along. Very good. Me and Commissioner Hans were at Eagle Scout Ceremony for, I'm going to try to say this right. Jill?
Jill Cortez.
Jill Cortez, thank you, and Nicholas Kirschenbaum. Two outstanding young men. Every time you go and see these, these young folks, it's just really amazing, the stuff that they do. You see it in the families, they're just, it's just such great, great, great events and good things that they're doing. And so one of my fun things, everybody knows how much I love animals, I was at the Humane Society's Breakfast at Sniffonies. And this time, I did not come back with a dog, Tanya Gott. Normally, make sure I have to take a dog with me, but, so we have three rescues, but that was, what a good event. It's, it's, see things getting back to normal a little bit, and everybody's out there, they bring their dogs, and that was, what a nice event. So hopefully, it was a success for them, and.
I heard if you didn't take a dog, they don't vote for you.
Well, then I guess I'm, I got three. Bishop, Bishop.
This is your fourth, fourth year.
Bishop, Bishop would not, would not be good with another one. Carolyn would have us take the entire Lynn Kelly Animal Shelter, we, you know, if we had the property, but yeah, Bishop isn't having another one, I can tell you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner McConkey?
Yeah, to bring up the bridge, so I started getting inboxes last night about supporting a toll bridge, so I don't support a toll bridge. I don't, I don't even believe that's been brought up to us, or there's not, hasn't been any discussion with us, so I don't want people to think that there has. And then last week, I attended the Employee Appreciation Day, which was very nice. Put the ERC always puts on a very good event. The food was great. Great people got awards. Congratulations to your dad, Rachel, for 40 years in county government. It was, it was a great event, we all attended that. That's it.
And they made me, they made me try to dance. We know how bad that is. I mean.
Glad I missed that.
Luckily, I left before that.
Yeah. That's, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Gaddy.
Thank you, sir. On Thursday, I received an invitation from Michael Jackson, Senator Michael Jackson, to attend an award ceremony at Northern High School. I want to thank Senator Jackson for that invite, and I found out that each high.
That's it.
And they made me try to dance, we know how bad that is. I mean, glad I missed that.
Luckily, I left before that.
That's, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Gady?
Thank you, sir. On Thursday, I received an invitation from Michael Jackson, Senator Michael Jackson, to attend an award ceremony at Northern High School. I want to thank Senator Jackson for that invite. And I found out that each high school has a senior awards function. And I would like to apologize to any of the other high schools that are out there. We did not receive any invitations for it. I know I personally would have been there if we would have been able to get invitations, and I look forward to attending school functions any and every time we're invited. Friday, obviously, we had the ERC. Thank you and congrats to go out to all those awardees. Fun time was had by everybody. Saturday morning, Calvert Memory Walk. I'd like to give a huge thanks to Celebrate Recovery from Emmanuel Church in Huntington, as well as the Calvert Health Department for being there to answer questions and get literature out on addictions. My wife and I had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Ben Carson, an amazing speaker, Saturday evening at King's Christian Academy 40th Year Anniversary. I know that's not in Calvert, but there are some students from Calvert that do go to the wonderful school there. And I also attended breakfast at Sniffonies, but before that, I also helped out with Friends of Felines with two adoptions, a mama cat and a kitten adoption on Saturday. So, we got, we made sure that we were equally supporting cats and dogs. Over the course of the last eight years, Breakfast at Sniffonies has raised over $70,000 to be given to local rescues to help them with their jobs. Sunday, had the opportunity to go to my first, and one of the first in Calvert County, brother and sister Eagle Scout ceremonies. Congratulations to Ashlyn and Stephen Vilcek. Ashlyn is of Troop 314. Stephen is of, she's the first Eagle Scout in Troop 314. Stephen is the 60th Eagle Scout in Troop 347. So congratulations to them. And I also learned, as many of us have heard over the past few years, young women are now allowed to get into Boy Scouts. I kind of naturally assumed that they would be in the same troop. However, Troop 347 is the young men's troop. Troop 314 is the young women's troop. So they do have separate troops. They do the same type of activities, but not physically together, most of the times. They are separated, and it was interesting to see how that laid out. And in closing, I was happy to also on Monday be down at the Thomas Johnson Bridge press conference, where many of us did find out why St. Mary's County is always a few degrees warmer than Calvert. Thank you.
Commissioner Weems?
I have nothing to report this week, sir.
Really?
Well, you know, I will...
Because you'll jump back in after I do.
Well, you prompt me, sir.
That happens a lot. I do the same thing.
I want to extend my condolences to the Odell family, who lost a member. And also, a couple weeks ago, Mr. Dorsey from the Optimist Club, he passed as well. So that's all.
So you did have a few things.
Well, yes.
So Commissioner Hart mentioned the groundbreaking last week at Pawtucket Business Park. It was actually a double groundbreaking, which is a little unique. We don't do many of those, so it's very exciting to do one, much less doing two at the same time for projects that are shovel-ready and getting ready to go. And on Sunday, as Commissioner Hart mentioned, we did attend the Eagle Ceremony for Mr. Cortez and Mr. Kirschenbaum. And I just want to give a shout-out to parents out there of young children, girls or boys. You should try to get them involved in scouting, because it's a great organization, and statistics show if you get those kids all the way through to Gold or Eagle, they turn out to be outstanding citizens. It just does such a great job of building character and gets them on the right path. So that's why we attend, try to attend every Eagle Ceremony and Gold Ceremony, because, you know, in today's times of so much going on with our youth, it's a rare opportunity to have such a great event to participate in. So we try to always make those. Yesterday morning, we did, had a, joined in a press conference with our federal and state legislators at the Pawtucket Bridge, down at the Thomas Johnson Bridge down in Solomon, sorry, where they announced some federal funding coming to Maryland. You saw the press release, it talked about $400 million. Clarification is that $400 million is not coming to the Thomas Johnson Bridge. That's coming to the state of Maryland. I think out of the $400 million, they've cut out a million to do design or study or something. You know, that bridge was built in the early '70s, and not long after it was built, they had to shut it down because it had structural issues. So this is not something new. That bridge has always been on people's lists. And today, over 31,000 cars cross that, cars and vehicles cross that bridge every day.
31,000?
Over 31,000, cars and vehicles. And there's no way, that bridge was designed for that amount of traffic. And it provides such a vital link for our citizens that commute to Pawtucket Naval Air Station and self-defense contractors, you know, and the evacuation route. If something were to happen in Calvert County, you know, that bridge is vital to our area. So we continue to push for replacement of the bridge, and we have to keep pressure on our state and federal officials to make sure that that does not get left behind. As Margaret Dunkle recently said at a hearing, public hearing, "We need to make sure that project is shovel-ready before we are." So, that's a great quote, I'm gonna keep using that. She'd probably charge me.
She actually did credit it to somebody else.
Well, but, we did at least bring attention to the bridge. It made the news, national news at night, so at least it keeps, we keep it out on the forefront. It doesn't get left behind, but we continue to work for that. Also, this afternoon, we're gonna be in North Beach at 2:00 at the North Beach Town Hall due to weather to have a groundbreaking ceremony for the new library that we're gonna build on the beach. And then at 3:30, North Beach is rededicating their memorial garden in honor of Mayor Mark Fraser. So if you're in the beach area, 2:00 and 3:30, there are events. The last thing I think I'm gonna wind up with, if I don't pull a Commissioner Weems, is the Calvert Girl Softball Team is playing tonight in the semifinals for the state championship. So, as I've mentioned many times before, in Calvert, I think we have more than our fair share of state champions. So tonight, we're gonna have an opportunity for one of our teams to get the next step before the state champions, up around Baltimore somewhere tonight.
Good point, because Pax High is, I want to say Regency Stadium for the next one. They're on a roll, but I don't know exactly where, how many is left? Do we know?
So, Girl Softball, I know tonight is the...
I lost it in the rain. I had it, and then one got rained out, so I'm a little confused, but...
So, anyway, we're gonna be very hopeful that they win tonight, they move on to states, and we'll have them in here when they bring home the trophy. So, everybody wish them best of luck, and I believe that's all I have. So, Commissioner Weems?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to 3-305B1A and 2 to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You all have a great day.